Call this meeting's order. Pleased to lead the week to the line of the United States of America. And here we are, likely with which stands one nation under our eye, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Good to see everybody today. Hope you all had a good weekend, this Labor Day weekend. So, we're back to work now. We will start with the minutes of our previous meeting on August the 15th. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? There was a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the minutes of the August 15 meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. First up on our agenda is Mr. Steve Vills, Community Corrections Director with a 144 request.
Hello. I'm here today to present a 144 request on a new employee, case manager at our facility. Will be taking Alana's place that moved to assistant director position.
Now, did I hear you right? She'll be taking the assistant?
She is taking, she'll be a case manager. Maybe working on circuit court cases offenders and she's taking Alana's place who moved to the assistant director's position.
Okay, so this is not a new position?
No, it's not a new position. It's just a still in a position we have open.
Alright. What's your pleasure?
I'm making a motion for the hire. Is Amber?
Amber, yes.
We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the 144 request for the hire of case manager, Amber Blaze, of Community Corrections. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Okay, nothing else, Steve?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Emergency Management Director Wade Walling. Do you have anything today, Wade?
I do, simply because I didn't have time to get this to Jane in time to get on the agenda. But I'm requesting approval to apply for HMEP grants. This is through the State of Indiana Homeland Security. It's a no-match grant, so there's no matching county funds that we have to add to this. And in the document I just gave you, and I'll give this to Jane, it lays out what I want to spend the funds on. I can apply for multiple grants through this. Each grant is considered its own separate project, so as you look at the document, planning, that's one project, training's another, exercise, and then equipment. This notice of funding opportunity just came out, I think it was less than, well, last week sometime with the end of the prior week. So I didn't have time to go through them, but get it to Jane. But I'm requesting approval to apply for these grants, $20,000 to get no-matching grants.
There are 20,000 maximums?
For each project, and I can apply for multiple projects.
Okay.
I should have probably said it that way instead of multiple grants. The other thing I was going to point out on this and the planning, it will provide for salary for technical staff to help write plans. As you know, the last meeting you guys approved my volunteer teams, so Jeff Griffin is going to be my team lead. I'll probably, if awarded this grant, use some of those stuffs to pay him to help write some of our planning emergency plans.
And no county money?
No match.
Motion by Dale, second by Tracy to give permission to the EMA director to apply for grants to the, does HMEP?
Or hazardous material emergency planning grant.
Okay. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane.
Jane, you can have that.
Didn't look, was that Wade?
Yeah. I guess some more funding through that. So, I am happy too, to announce that I just received a check from Duke Energy Grant, $2,000. I gave it to Jane earlier, so we have that now.
Good deal.
That's it.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Not me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Highway Director Jay Hadlin, Jay, do you have anything to report today?
Glad to tell you what we've been doing. We've had brush cut out, and we've got both of them out today, so we're going to try to catch up as much as we can. Stopped our chip ceiling for right now till we see how much money we have left. Soon as I get all the bills into what we already bought, and all, then I'll know how much farther we can go with it. We should be by the end of the week, we should know when to start next week again. We got a spot on hot road, we want to go down and put hot mix on it or something on it, because it's right in the center of the hill. It's got to be something that'll stay when we put it on there.
On the hill on the way down to the creek?
Down to the drive board, yeah.
Okay.
And there's a couple spots out past there we can fix too while we're down there. But I'm just waiting to see how much money we're going to have to do it. Aside from that, we're going to keep trimming, we've been hand patching, we've had the spray patches out. We've got them working right, if we got all that old oil out of the tank, then put new in, they seem to work better, so.
Now, we did resurface hot road from the top of the hill on north, didn't we?
We offed from the Big Bear, all the way out, just starting over top of the hill was paved. We paved that whole road.
Yeah.
We didn't have enough to go down over the hill and on the rest of the way out. I think it was the last road we done that year. But it needs to be done, but we can patch it and make it last and maybe pick it up next season. Of course, you hate to do it out before winter, because it makes it slicker and all get out coming down it.
It does. Whatever, you're right, whatever you put on that hill has got to stay.
Yeah. And it seems to be, it takes a lot of traffic. A lot of dump trucks using stuff like that, people live and drive dump truck and haul gravel and stuff, they go that way to the law. Get it down to get the gravel. It takes some beating. We'll get it.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm going to bring a new employee in as soon as he gets his license caught up. What can I do with it? Glossy. I don't know what I did with it, but I'll bring you a 1044 for him though.
144.
This ain't my day, I'm glad it's Monday.
Yeah.
Tuesday.
But yeah, I'll bring it in for the next meeting, because there's going to be a couple weeks for them to come down there. Make sure everything's straightened out and ready.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anybody have anything for Jay?
Well, I was thinking about the inventory list too, what time of year is it you guys bring that in to us? Your inventory? Are you guys, you have a certain time of year you do your inventory?
Usually after first year.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just thinking about that, so.
Anything else? Okay, thanks for coming in, Jay. Is Recorder Lisa Witt here?
Yes. Hello, I am just here today for our CSI maintenance agreement that we do every year. CSI is the program that we use for recording documents. There's three parts to the agreement, the first part is the maintenance agreement, the second part is the microfilm services agreement that maintains our microfilm, and then the disaster recovery services agreement kind of backs our stuff up, so if something were to happen for water or fire, then we would have something on hand for that. Send it to you all through email, I have the original here, so.
Yeah, Lisa did email that to us, here's a call back, did you all take a look at it?
We paid for it out of the perpetuation fund, so.
This is not something new either.
No.
Recorder's office has used this service for a long time.
Yeah. We're actually, we had a training last week on Tuesday, well, it wasn't really a training, but kind of like an introduction service for e-report that will allow people to e-report in their needs, because right now we don't do any type of transfers, and they're going to be working with the auditor's office, the assessor, and the recorder. The recorder's office is already set up, we're just waiting for everyone else to come on board.
Okay.
Also getting ready to add credit cards with.
And the county attorney has been able to review this, haven't you?
Indeed.
You find any problems with it?
No issues.
Jay, what's your pleasure? We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the maintenance agreement contract between CSI and the theater system incorporated and the Fayette County Recorder's Office in the amount of $6,735. Is there any further question?
We're also privy to the microfilm services agreement and the disaster recovery, correct? This will be blanketed in under the one motion? Okay.
That.
How much are all of these together?
We're not sure.
I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing them separately here, Lisa.
Yeah, I would have to get figures on that.
Because it looks like right now you're paying about $36,000, does that sound right?
Something like that.
But right now there's only two agreements, so you're adding the third one?
We're at, we already have the disaster recovery and the microfilm services. It may also be coming out of like the redaction services.
Some other.
Was, was it in our email, or is this what we got?
This is everything that they sent, yeah. What I sent you is everything that they sent.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, so you sent the disaster and something else was new, and then there's the third one's a new one, which one is the new one?
The microfilm services, and we actually have that as well.
I'm only seeing one contract.
Oh, okay. This one is the maintenance one, this one is the microfilm one. I've got them all papered together, but they are, and then that was the disaster recovery.
Yeah, are they all three included in the same?
They're all, they're all three paid out of perpetuation or redaction services, and I could get you totals.
No, thanks, they're going to have all these things up there.
Are they all for the $6,735 amount?
Well, I have not looked at that.
Because that's the only price I see.
That's the only price I see, and it says it closes the service agreement covering the detailed end listing in CSI.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, I could send you over that information.
Well, these, these two additional.
I know there, there are already services we are paying for.
Now, in our email, we only have the one invoice with the $6,735, and it's only, it only shows the maintenance agreement.
Yeah, I'm not really seeing the price.
It doesn't really have the others listed. Let's see, it might be here.
Okay, so if you look on page two of 10 on the microfilm service and pricing, it says the microfilm service agreement pricing, one-year term, $2,015 per year. Microfilm volume 31,000, 31,000 pages per year based, microfilm volume overage 75 cents per scanned page. And it kind of gives a breakdown on page two. So on page two of seven on the disaster relief, it gives the payment terms as well there.
There's just not a total, like, yeah.
Page two, this one.
Page, yeah, it's all on page two.
Alright, let's get this straight now. We have a microfilm services agreement for where was that at Dale? $2,015. And then a disaster recovery services agreement.
It says one-year term, $873.73 per year.
$873.73. And then
Your maintenance agreement.
Maintenance agreement, the $6,735. And these are all three that you use?
These are all three that we're, yeah.
Anyone want?
And I guess it would be in our benefit to continue to use them.
Does anyone want to reword our motion to include all three of these agreements in the amounts?
I would approve all three of them, $6,735, $2,015, and $873.73.
And that's a total of $9,623.73 for Jane's. She wants to put the total in there?
I'm sorry, say it again, please.
Now, second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve all three of these agreements for the Recorder's Office totaling $9,623.73. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane. There you go.
Thank you.
Sheriff Jones, do you have anything today?
I do not, just can't get you guys to have questions. Stick around, I got a question. Why, King?
Surveyor Bill Mackey, do you have anything? County Attorney, Mr. Wesling, do you have anything?
Not today, sir.
Okay. Does anyone have any mail they need to share? Do we have anything in our old business we need to take care of?
Not that I remember.
Okay, we'll go on a new business, we've taken care of the agreements with the Recorder's Office. Mr. Todd Jennings is here. He is the Program Manager for Public Transit in the State of Indiana. And he's here to discuss and explain some changes in our public transportation procedures. Sir Todd, come and fill us in, what you're going to do.
Alright, do you guys have that presentation that I sent Mike?
I have the presentation that I got over there.
So, Mike King supposedly set this up so you guys could see it. PowerPoint, he emailed it this week, said it was.
It was sent to Michael King?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of that.
I can read the email real quick. That is it?
Yeah.
Right there.
Good job.
We should be able to see the hard springs too.
Yeah, click that. I'm not a PowerPoint guy. There we go, that's what I was looking for. There's always somebody in the crowd knows what we said. Alright, well, good afternoon, Commissioners. Dale, I know you, Tracy, I know you through work history and family, and Dale Munson, I don't think I've ever met you before. So, but I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to kind of update you on where we're at with a major project within, within the state. I guess I'm at the end of the day, so I get to keep you guys longer than what you want to be here. So, I'll try to get through this as quick as I can. So, but again, I'm here today just to kind of give you guys an update on a project that we are setting in motion, not only here in Fayette County and Union County, but within the entire state, so let me just get kind of where I'm going to start here on is, something they said here. Alright, so just to kind of give you guys an overview on our office of transit staff, that is kind of a snapshot of who operates the office of transit for the state. We're part of the multimodal division. We're very small staff in comparison to peers throughout the country that have very similar sized programs, same size rural, same number of sub recipients and the like. But myself, Amy Craft, Mike McGaffey, we all make up the 5311 program. And when I'm talking about the 5311 program, I'm talking about the rural transit funds that you guys receive and currently pass through to Ms. Nisa Whitaker who's here today representing the transit system, and Dave Lane in Fayette County Council on Aging to operate the public transportation service here within Fayette County. So we've also got, just to kind of give you guys an idea of how our office is set up, we work with the Rural Transit Assistance Program Office that's located down in Columbus, Indiana. That office, they have three staff members down there, and they primarily provide training, technical assistance to our rural transit providers. Our drivers specifically, when it comes like passenger assistance, defensive driving. There's all kinds of different training modes that we've got, but that's what that office does primarily. Then they, they provide technical assistance to the transit agencies when it comes to like day-to-day operational type of situations that may come up of passengers or, or service. And then we're in a four-year contract with RLS and Associates, who is a premier transit consulting firm who operates out of Dayton. We've been with them for, gosh, I think over 20 years. We're in the fourth year of our, or second year of our four-year contract with them right now, so that's kind of how our office is set up. So as I kind of go through these next, next few slides and kind of give you an update of where we're at, I want to emphasize a few things before we get into it. First, I just want to emphasize that this is a massive, massive project that we're taking on in the state. I don't want anybody here today to think that this is just isolated to Fayette County and what we're looking at as far as partnerships and consolidation with Union County Transit, and actually in the future, a couple other counties that we're looking to possibly bring into this, this service area. So I don't want you guys to think that it's just an isolated incident here. This is a statewide project that we're actually starting to put in place. I'm going to get a little bit more of that in a second. But most importantly, I think, and I shared this a little bit with Dale, and Nisa knows this, she's heard me preach this at, at our trainings and our annual meetings with our, our sub recipients, but this is something that we should all be very excited about. It's something that's going to greatly improve transportation, public transportation within not only this service area, but throughout the state. It's going to greatly improve and provide additional transit opportunities for so many passengers right now that are going unserved in our state. And I'm going to get into kind of a little bit, bit of that in a second. But I want everybody to kind of, you know, just have that kind of mentality going into this thing, that it's not, it's, it's not a negative project, it's not a bad project that we're looking to do right now. And I mean, it's something that's going to greatly improve our, our industry throughout the state. So everybody should be, you know, pretty excited about what's, what's coming down the road, so. One of the things I want to mention about that slide up there too, that you're looking as far as our offices concerned, you can see the three offices that I, I mentioned. We all kind of orbit around the federal transit administration, which is the federal agency that oversees our office. And we've actually had the pleasure of meeting with them over the last three weeks, because we've been involved in our own state management review, where they come in and they audit the state every three years to make sure that we are managing the program in accordance with all the, all the federal regulations that go along with receiving $1 of federal money. And Nisa has learned quickly, there's a lot of federal regulation that goes along with it. So, with that, we'll kind of walk our way through some of this. You know, as I mentioned, regionalization of our rural transit program. This is a snapshot of the nationwide kind of regional model that's set up by FTA. We're part of Region Five. We're included with, you can see there, Illinois, Ohio, Michigan, Wisconsin, and Minnesota. We meet with FTA every quarter to go over program updates, possibly any new requirements that are going to be coming down the pipe that we need to flow down through to our sub recipients. We talk about best practices, piggyback on, on, you know, how other states may be managing their programs. So we meet with them, like I said, every quarter. But I wanted to kind of throw that up there to you guys to let you know that even on a federal level, they manage and oversee the program on a regional model. It's not set up where, you know, you've got a project manager per state, they do it regionalized too. So we kind of want to piggyback off of that and, you know, as a member forward. So, that just kind of gives you an idea of what that looks like. So, this, as I switch, are you guys seeing this on your computers? Okay, I was wondering, because yours was like, yeah. Okay, so the, the map that you're looking at here, I know it's very, very busy, but what this map is showing, it's, it's kind of a snapshot of what rural public transportation looks like right now within the State of Indiana. The counties that are, that are in black font are actually counties that have a single transit provider operating in that county. So like Fayette County Transit, they are the single recipient for Fayette County that provides public transportation to Fayette County's service area. So they operate within a single county. Those are all the, the counties that are highlighted in black there. The ones that are all color-coded the same, those are, in a sense, a regional model that's already set up, and I'm going to get a little bit more into those systems here in a little bit. But the ones I want to focus on are the ones that are in red. Those are the unserved counties that we have right now in the State of Indiana. And it's primarily a result of the model that we have in place right now, which is a dinosaur. Okay, so our goal, long-term, is eventually, once we set in place this regionalization of our program, that there are no longer any unserved counties within the State of Indiana. Now, just because of the red, one thing I want to clarify, doesn't necessarily mean that you do not receive some sort of public transportation. There may be an urbanized system that operates within that county, or there could be a rural public transportation system that operates in an adjacent county that, you know, that provides some sort of incidental services over into those counties. But to have an actual recipient located within those counties, that's not the case. So again, right now, that's why we're kind of looking at, at going in this direction to make sure that we get the entire state covered with some sort of rural public transportation. So, what I'm going to kind of cover here over the next few minutes, and again, I want to keep you guys long, but I want to answer some questions I'm sure you guys have, and I've talked, you know, Dale came over for a meeting that we had about a couple months ago. And he heard a little bit of this, but kind of want to reiterate some of it. But want to talk about what is regionalization, what does it look like in other states? What are the main initiators for it? What are the benefits? Kind of what our 5311 programs look, look like historically, kind of where we're at? You know, why we look the way we. look like historically, kind of where we're at, you know, why we look the way we do, why now, why all of a sudden we're going towards regionalization, what to expect and when, and specifically the next steps when it comes to the regionalization of Fayette County along with Union County. So that's kind of what I want to go over here over the next few minutes. So what is regionalization? So regionalization is basically another way of saying consolidation. It's basically, you know, one in the same. You can look at this definition here, it comes from a transit research board study that was done back in 2017, and it kind of goes a little bit more in detail about what it is. But for this case, we're talking about taking Fayette County Council on Aging, Union County Council on Aging, and those transit systems and consolidating them together to help provide more of a regional service than that single county model that's set up right now. Now, I will say, when it comes to Union County Council on Aging and their transit system, they're actually already operating in two counties. They're operating in Union County right now, that's their primary service area, and then they also get funds for rural Wayne County. So are you guys familiar with Roseville Transit in Richmond? That's another 5311 funded system, but they primarily operate those fixed route systems within the city of Richmond. They do not provide any sort of rural transit outside of the city limits. So that's why Union County has been funded for years to provide that service within that area. So that's kind of a brief definition of what regionalization is. I mean, it goes into a lot greater depth, but again, not to keep you guys all day here. So what does regionalization look like in other states? You can kind of see, I've pulled some regional maps from other states, kind of what it looks like. Now, I will say, as you're looking at this, not one size fits all. There's a little bit of nuance between all of these states and how they regionalize their transit systems. The one I want to focus on is the upper-left state, Iowa. The model that they have set up up there is probably the closest model of what we're going to look to mirror. I think they had at one time over 60 sub recipients in that state, and they have, over the last, I think it's been probably the last eight to 10 years, they've been, you know, regionalizing the entire state where now they have 16 regions set up. Instead of those 61 recipients, they've got 16 regions that operate within that state. And I actually went out to DC a couple of weeks ago for our FTA State Program Manager Meeting and had Dr. Tring sit down with one of the staff members that worked in the Iowa Office of Transit there. And I'm going to tell you, he had nothing but great things to say about the way the project transitioned, the way that the whole industry evolved, and the fact that, you know, they've got so much greater efficiencies and greater abilities to meet so many more needs out there when it comes to public transportation. So that's probably the closest model that we're going to try to mirror, and we're going to work with all those states and with the addition of some others that aren't listed there to kind of piggyback on some ideas that they've got and some processes that they've put in place. So what does regionalization look like in Indiana? This is kind of some snapshots or some pie pieces of the bigger state map that I put up there. We've got six sub recipients right now that operate in some sense of the term as a regional system. Curpsy up in the far left is probably the model that we're going to try to look at to kind of emulate down here with Fayette, Union County, and some other counties that we're going to try to bring in at some point. But Curpsy stands for Kankakee Regional Planning Commission. It's a planning commission up there, and they receive, they're the sub recipient, they receive the federal funds, and then they funnel them through to four nonprofit agencies that operate in each of those four counties up there. But they all operate under one umbrella. It's the Arrowhead Public Transportation System that operates up there. So they all kind of have the same policies, procedures, same kind of service characteristics. But that's kind of the model that we're going to look at to try to implement down in this region down here. Our largest regional-type service provider is down in what we would call the toe of the state. It's Ride Solution. They operate in 10 counties down there, and they are contracted with a couple nonprofits. Actually, I think there's three nonprofits that operate down in those areas to provide that service. But if you go down there, if you're in any of those 10 counties, you will see vehicles being driven and operating with Ride Solution on the side. They all operate under the same umbrella. It's a very robust system down there, so, but again, that's our largest. So that kind of gives you an idea of what our regionalization looks like in the state. So what are some of the main initiators for the reason why we're going in this direction? So as we work through this slide here, this isn't an all-inclusive list by any means. I mean, there's many other factors that went into why states started to initiate regionalization. But, you know, I'm just going to kind of breeze through this real quick. I mean, a lot of times, the main identifier that states have seen is that there's just limited resources when it comes to public transportation in some communities, and they have no public transit, which lends to the gaps in services that I've already kind of identified in those counties that don't have service. A lot of times, and you guys know this, municipal dollars are sometimes very limited and very competitive among local stakeholders, other organizations that want county money. And as you guys know, I mean, I know the gentleman came up earlier and mentioned that there was a grant available for zero match, which is always a good thing, and I'm glad you guys approved that for him. But with these funds, it comes with a 50% match requirement for operating, and then capital has a 20% match requirement. A lot of times, there's municipalities out there that they really struggle to come up with that match. And so there's, you know, unfortunately, a lack of resources when it comes to public transit in those areas. Coordination in service areas is lacking in many areas. And what I mean there is like, and I'll just use Fayette, Union County as an example. I'm not saying it's occurring or not occurring, but where you'll have two adjacent transit systems operating right beside each other, and there's no coordination, there's no communication taking place, and it leads to so many inefficiencies. And I will say, it's happening throughout our state and other areas, but it leads to inefficiencies, it leads to duplication of services, where you've got two or three vans sitting at the same place from two or three different transit providers, and it's just very, very inefficient. So those are some of the kind of things that other states have seen and that we have seen as far as initiators, as far as why we're wanting to go this direction. And then ultimately, compliance can be very burdensome. Like I've already mentioned, there's a vast amount of federal requirements that come with receiving these dollars. And when you're talking about a small nonprofit agency that has, you know, one or two individuals within that organization that's trying to not only meet our requirements, but maybe have three, four, five, six other programs within their agency, and you've got one or two individuals trying to maintain that and maintain compliance, it can become very burdensome. So I can tell you, I mean, we just met, like I said, we just met with FTA over the last two or three weeks with our own state management review, and we were actually working our way through one of the program categories. And I questioned about, hey, is there a discussion, you know, among FTA to kind of lessen these regulatory requirements on some of these small nonprofits? Because a lot of times, what we see as a state is these federal requirements that are put in place for public transportation. A lot of the times, it is meant for your large urban transit systems, your Indigos, your Fort Wayne Transits, your, it's not scalable to Nisa Wicker over at Fayette County, you know, Council on Aging. And it puts such a burden on them to try to meet these requirements that sometimes it's difficult to work through. But when I was asking this question at FTA, their actual response verbatim was, we don't see it getting any better, we see it getting worse. So, and that was only over one area of the program. And I could probably say, over time, we're going to see regulatory requirements probably increase over the entire program. So that's kind of some of the initiators that are moving us towards this model. Some of the benefits of doing it kind of coincide, and I'm not going to read through all that slide there, you guys can read it, you know, after, you know, the meeting's over today. But, you know, as we previously mentioned, efficiencies and the options for service are going to improve, cost savings, service improvements are identified, you know, when regionalization goes into play. You can take a look at existing travel patterns of transit systems and try to make improvements there, expansions into unserved areas, access to resources among agencies. And I tell you right now, with like Fayette County Transit as a perfect example, and Union County Transit, they utilize the same dispatching and scheduling software, and it's an online software. So it's a perfect opportunity to work with them to marry that system together and to try to improve services within, you know, this region here. So, you know, it lends to improved compliance, improved technical assistance by our office because now, you know, the fact that we've got, you know, a small staff trying to meet, trying to provide technical assistance to 41 sub recipients, you know, once the regionalization model is in place, now we're looking at 12 to 15 possible recipients that we can work with on a one-on-one basis, and we can provide more technical assistance, more improved technical assistance to those agencies in that regard. So those are some of the benefits that states have seen by going to this model. So historically, where we've been as a program, and I'm just going to summarize this as well, back in the 70s and 80s, a lot of our transit systems operated out of your council on agings or your vocational rehabs, and it was primarily for their clients, for their clientele, for their clients to get therapy and to go to their appointments, and then, you know, for their senior citizens that want, you know, come to the council on aging or senior center every day. So once the public transit dollars were made available, you know, the state reached out to these agencies and said, hey, we've got these public transit dollars, are you willing to open it up to the general public, receive these monies, and provide this service? And that's kind of how our program has grown over the last 30 or 40 years, which leads us to where we're at today, where we've got 41 sub recipients throughout the state who primarily operate as single-county recipients. And you can see there at the very bottom of the slide, that puts us ninth throughout the country as far as having the most sub recipients. And you can see on that list of states, there's some pretty large states. So to have the staff that we have, to have the size of program that we've got, and to have so many sub recipients, I think it's just beneficial to us to move in that direction. So why now? Why are we going to regionalization now? The project was originally planned for implementation in 2020, and actually, I'll even go back and say as far as 2015, I was hired as program manager back in 2013, and I was set and planned on implementing this part of the program back in about 2015, but because of the projects kind of got in the way, it got put on the back burner. And when 2020 came around, I was all excited, ready to start, but unfortunately, we know this pandemic rolled in and kind of put that on the back burner again. Another reason is because we've got 5311 funds right now that are sufficient and substantial enough to where we can support these consolidations. And if it's identified that we can expand services, we've got the funds to do it, and that's a result of the CARES money and the ARP funds that came through over the last two or three years. And these transit systems were able to pay for their expenses at 100%, there was no match. So that allowed the state to be able to put some money back, you know, to kind of deobligate some funds from past grants over the last two or three years. So now we're sitting at a pretty good place to be able to have these funds available to do it. Another reason, we continue, it's very consistent that we receive emails, phone calls, whatever, letters by carrier pigeon about, hey, we need transportation in our community. And one of the things that we find very interesting is we get contacted quite frequently about, you know, from local community stakeholders that will say, hey, we met with these organizations or these entities within our local community to sit down and talk about X, but it ended up being talked, the whole meeting was centered around transportation and why, you know, how do we get transportation, and how do we meet the needs of our local community when it comes to these types of services? So that's something that we are consistently contacted about. And then I've already talked about and shown that, you know, the nationwide public transportation model is ever-evolving, and we just no longer want to be a dinosaur in the industry, so it's about time to start moving forward with this regionalization. So the map that you're looking at here, you know, as Kevin did in Home Along, don't freak out here, this is just a rough, very rough draft that we put together as far as what regionalization could possibly look like within the state. And this comes 100% from human service coordination plans that are currently in place that actually Nisa is a part of as a nonprofit organization. The 5310 program that I mentioned earlier, that program provides capital funding for vehicles for nonprofit organizations throughout the state. One of the requirements to receive those funds is you have to be part of a human service coordination plan. And basically, what those are, in summary, is nonprofits are all part of a specific region, and coordination and partnerships are supposed to be taking place within those coordination plans, which we see very little of. But this is exactly where these regions come from. They're already set up in those plans, so we just kind of pull from that. You can see there, over there, you know, where we're located in Fayette County, you've got Fayette, Wayne, Rush, Franklin, and Shelby County, all included in a proposed region. I will say, however, although I'm saying this is a rough draft, end goal is probably to be that exact region with the exception of possibly Shelby County. I'm not so sure if we're looking at bringing them into this region or if they're going to be part of another region. So that's the only county in that area that could possibly change. But for the most part, we're looking at those other five counties that I just mentioned being a part of this service area, this region. All right. So moving forward, kind of where we're at since my last meeting with Nisa and Dale was a part of that, kind of where we're at now. We provide two trainings a year to our sub recipients, one in June and then the other in October. This past June is when I stood before all of our transit systems and basically let them know that the state is moving towards this regionalization, we're going to start implementing it. Again, as I've shared here today, the project is going to be long-range. I mean, we're looking at possibly 2030, 2035 before it is completely, you know, we're completed with the project. Up until that time, systems are going to continue to operate, you know, as they're contractually obligated to operate as in past grant cycles. So nothing's going to change until we come to them and actually contact them to say, hey, we want to start setting down to have planning meetings with you to work through your region and start the discussions there. We're going to designate a passer entity based on historical compliance and current level of federally required technical capacity. So for this specific region here, we're looking at Union County Commissioners acting as the passer entity for the federal funds. And I'm going to share here in a minute what that's going to look like, so don't get anxious or excited about that. And then once the regionalization is completed, we're going to work with the counties, the cities, the transportation governing boards to, you know, to set these models up. So, and one thing I will say, as far as, another reason kind of why I'm starting here in Fayette County, one reason because I live here. Another reason is because I used to be the transit manager for the transit system over here in Fayette County. So I'm very familiar with the services, I know how they operate, and I know some things have changed over the years since I've been, since I've left, but I'm very familiar with the service area. I'm very familiar with Liberty and the service area that they provide. I manage the program. So that's another reason why I kind of wanted to start here, because I mean, the more familiar I have, the better off we are to start. So that kind of jump-started it in this region as well. So back in April of '23, I met with Dave Lane, who is the current agency director over Fayette County Council on Aging. I went over there to meet with him to just sit down for an annual site visit, or a technical review is another way we like to put it. It was during that meeting that Dave kind of shared that there was going to be a transition administratively within the organization, probably this fall. The last I understand, and the last that we've communicated, I believe that's still taking place unless something's changed. That kind of confirmation and him sharing that with me kind of kick-started the plan to start regionalizing this area. So it was at that time I notified the agency director over at Union County Council on Aging and basically let her know to, hey, be ready, we're going to start looking at regionalizing this area and consolidating these systems together. Shortly after, in July of '23, that's when I instructed her to basically communicate that plan to her county commissioners and obtain confirmation on whether or not they would be willing to act as the grant applicant recipient, passer entity of these federal dollars, of which they agreed to do so. And then shortly after that is when I sat down over here with Dave and Jolisa Bates, I think, I believe sat in on it, Nisa was in on the meeting, Dale, you came in and sat on the meeting, and then an agency board member sat in on the meeting as well, just to kind of work through and talk about what this was going to look like for the remainder of the year. So that kind of brings us to August. I sent an email out to Dave Trish over at Union County, and I believe all the commissioners were copied on it, basically kind of letting you guys know how we were going to start moving forward with this. As far as the current grant application, that's on file right now and being reviewed for calendar year 2024. We are actually getting ready to, we're probably about a month and a half away from starting to draft those contracts to go out for local signatures for these funds. But this is kind of a list of some documentation that needs to be updated, revised, re-signed, so we can get included within that application to start moving forward with the new setup for these funds. And one thing I will say on this slide here, there's a document in there, it's called the Certification of Use of Capital Equipment. So if there's any questions about, you know, during this transition right now, whether or not the vehicles, the equipment, all that stuff is going to be transferred, no, it's all going to stay within, the titles are still going to be held by the Fayette County Commissioners for all that equipment that's been purchased through these federal funds in the past. So nothing's going to change there. I'm going to share a little bit about the operating budget in a minute, and then there's some other documentation that we need to get set in place too. So working through these documents, which brings us to today, the county commissioner meeting. I'm going to meet with Union County Commissioners next week and go over the same information with them. But the application documents, there's an authorizing resolution in there, I've already updated that resolution. I'm going to be sending it to you guys after the meeting today, so you guys can review it and just get it signed. There hasn't been anything major changes, there's been some minor revisions to language because of the way the consolidation is going to work itself out, but I'll get it to you guys and so you guys can review it and then, you know, re-sign, and then try to get those back to me by October thirteenth so we can get it included in the application. The local financial assurances document that's in there, those identify the original local funds that from the county you guys certified and assured would be available for these funds in two thousand twenty-four. That document is just going to be consolidated with Union County's document that they signed off for their local funds, for their transit agency. So, those documents are going to be uploaded in there as well as one consolidated document. I've already talked about the use of capital equipment. The operating budgets, I'm currently working on developing that budget, that one single budget that's going to be submitted with the application. I'm taking Fayette County's budget that they submitted within their application, going to marry it and consolidate it with Union County's budget, and then it's going to be uploaded as one budget within that application. One thing I will say there, and you can see it's in real big red bold letters there, don't worry about the funding, don't be anxious about funding decreasing because of this consolidation or restructuring of who's going to funnel these funds through. Your original federal allocation, state allocation is going to remain exactly the same. You're going to get the same amount of money. It's just a matter of, it's going to be included with another agency budget instead of just, you know, Fayette County Council on Aging's budget. Indirect costs are going to be factored into the budget, both agencies and all work with the agencies on that as needed. And then, ultimately, in the end, come January first, two thousand twenty-four, that's when Fayette County Council on Aging or whoever's responsible there at that agency for creating a quarterly claim for reimbursement of those funds, they're going to, instead of submitting that claim to me, they're going to submit it to Union County Council on Aging Agency Director, and she will include that quarterly claim for reimbursement within her quarterly claim for reimbursement, and it will come to me, you know, all inclusive of one reimbursement request. And there's a document that I'm going to provide NISA or Dave or whoever did this, going to be filling out that claim form, so they'll have that ready to go come January of two thousand twenty-four. FTA certifications and assurances that go in the application, the original assurances that you guys already signed off on, there's no change there. I mean, we're just going to consolidate those with Union Counties. But there's two other documents that we're going to have to, I need you guys to review and take a look at and then sign off on them, and hopefully get them back to me about October thirteenth so we can get them uploaded in the application. And that's the intergovernmental agreement between you guys, Union County Commissioners, and then the updated pass-through agreement and how those funds will be passed through to Fayette County Council on Aging. So, in two thousand twenty-four, what are the expectations as far as administrative responsibility for compliance? So, as you guys will see, once I give you guys the intergovernmental agreement, the pass-through agreement and all of that, it's all spelled out in there, but basically, all throughout two thousand twenty-four, compliance is going to remain with Fayette County Council on Aging. It's going to be their responsibility, just like Union County Council on Aging is going to be responsible for their compliance. You guys are going to still be responsible for their compliance with, you know, within the services here in Fayette County. I'm still going to require NISA to come over to quarterly meetings. She's still going to have to give you guys updates. So, nothing is really going to change as far as a major operational administrative change in twenty-four, which leads us to the back half of this, you know, information I want to share with you here. So, the first quarter of twenty-four, what that's going to look like is, like I said, operations are going to remain consistent with the previous grant period characteristics. No major service changes are going to incur. I'm going to start working with NISA, start working with Trish over at Union County. We're going to start putting public notifications out to let everybody know that, hey, this is what's, this is what's going to start happening, and this is what these services are going to start looking like over the next year or two. So, we'll assist them with that. And then, in March of two thousand twenty-four, the two thousand twenty-five application will get submitted, and I'm going to share a couple of things on that here in a second. Once we get into the second quarter, that's when I'm going to start coming in, and our consultants are going to come in along with me. We're going to sit down with NISA, we're going to sit down with Trish, you know, and we're going to start looking at the overall structure of the transit systems, how they operate, the administrative structure. We're going to look at all these things and start coming up with recommendations on how do we now start marrying you guys together to where you're operating under one single umbrella that will be implemented in two thousand, January one, two thousand twenty-five. So, twenty-four is going to look pretty much the same. Twenty-five is when we're going to see the real consolidation and regionalization start to take hold and start to take root. So, that's going to, that's, you know, we'll come in the second quarter of twenty-four and start working with them and start planning some of those changes. So, the third quarter is when we'll hopefully be able to come in, start getting some of those recommendations and some of the things that we've identified as far as operational and administrative service changes approved. At that time, we hope to have a new transit system name for the region established, and then we'll get some amended documents, the intergovernmental agreement, pass-through agreement. And there's actually one additional that's on that slide, because we're going to have to develop an inter-agency agreement between Fayette County Council on Aging and Union County Council on Aging that spells out exactly what the responsibilities for the management, administrator staff and all that. So, we'll work with them on that to get those drafted up and then get those in place. And then, October through December of twenty-four, the last quarter, is basically finalizing any of the vital documents, media outlets that we need to kind of get placed to make sure that everything's buttoned up and ready to go January one of twenty-five to where operations begin with the approved administrative operation service changes as one transit entity, basically. And then, February through December of twenty-five, we are going to continue as a state office to work with these agencies to identify other areas of the program where we're going to have to start marrying things together, consolidating, you know, policies, procedures and the like. And there's, you know, a vast, you know, amount of things that we'll have to come in and work with them on those types of things to get in place. But it's a slow burn in regard to these changes. It's not like we're going to come in and just expect things to just change overnight. So, we're going to work with everybody on this, you know, the local governing boards, the agencies. So, ultimately, I mean, we're, you know, our goal in the end is to improve services for this region and again, ultimately, throughout the state. So, so, our next steps after I leave here today, I'm going to provide those intergovernmental agreements to you guys, the authorizing resolution. So, you guys take a look at that, review it, sign it, and then the pass-through agreements as well, so you can take a look at those, get those signed, and then we'll get them uploaded into the applications for twenty-four. So, that's my spiel. Any questions? I know that was a lot. I threw a lot at you in twenty minutes or so, so if you've got any questions, I'm here or you can hit me up later on.
Can you send us a copy of this PowerPoint?
You've already got it.
You've got it?
Yeah, Mike King uploaded it to whatever he uploaded it to, so.
Okay. I don't think he copied us on.
Okay, yeah.
At the end of twenty-five, how many people will lose their jobs?
How many? That's the million-dollar question, Dale. I mean, we look at keeping agencies whole, but in reality, I mean, we're not so naive to think that, you know, when it comes to restructuring, looking at service changes, consolidation, the reality situation is, is that's, that could be a possibility. Now, our goal is to have agencies remain whole in that. And ultimately, to be honest with you, instead of losing jobs, if we meet our goal and our purpose through this, we're not going to lose jobs, we're going to be adding jobs. You know, we're going to need more drivers, we're going to need more dispatchers, we're going to need, you know, so as far as the downsizing of staff, that's, that's the opposite of what we perceive is going to happen. We see the addition of jobs, not the loss of jobs.
Why did you go to Union County Commissioners and ask their permission to include Fayette County instead of Fayette County, as we're the largest county and we have the most buses and we have a whole lot more people in our transportation area?
Well, the answer to that question, and I've shared it in one of the slides, is one of the things that we're looking at as far as who's going to act as that, as that pass-through entity and that grant applicant of those funds, is historical compliance with the program and technical capacity when it comes to the ability to manage and administer the program. There's some things I can talk to you about outside of the meeting because there's a lot, but when it comes to, it's not that Fayette County Transit has ever been in non-compliance, but on the surface, they are, NISA is the fourth transit manager in ten years at Fayette County Transit. And so, Union County Transit has had the same agency director for twelve years.
That's because they don't have enough people. They're hiring.
Well, I understand that, but, but there is an element, there is an element of compliance with the program that we went back and we took a look at over the years, over the last ten years or so, where has these agencies met compliance? And based on our discretion and based on our, what we see, the best fit for this service area is to have Union County Commissioners act as that entity for those funds. So, that's a short answer to a long response that I'm going to have to meet with you afterwards if you want to have additional discussion, but, but that's the primary reason. And then, we're, and we're going to look at that throughout the state. When we go into regions throughout the state, that is our primary focus, is historical compliance and the federally, let me emphasize that as well, the federally required levels of technical capacity when it comes to having the work experience, the transit background, the grant management experience, the operational experience to be able to manage these funds, that's what we're looking at when we're, when we're deciding on who's going to act as that, that recipient of those funds. So, again, it's not that Fayette County's ever been in non-compliance, but the levels of technical capacity that are in place at Fayette County Council on Aging right now in comparison to where Union County Council on Aging is, it's, it's just different. It's, they're at a different level. So, short answer to them.
I'm very unhappy.
Well, we're not so naive to know that there are not going to be people that are upset, you know, with the potential changes that are coming. And we're going to do what we can as a state to try to answer those questions and try to.
I would think that Union County and Wayne County would be your best connection because people from Union County go to Wayne County all the time, and there's a whole lot more traffic between those two counties than there is between Fayette, and I would have thought that would have been your first two.
I mean, there's, again, that goes back to where we're looking at travel patterns, we're looking at the way services are set up, you know, currently what they're providing. And again, I mean, one of the things that you got to keep in mind is I'm very, very familiar with this area. I ran that system for years, for about four years. So, I know what the service characteristics are, I know what the abilities are of the services in this area, I know what they can do and I know what they can't do. So, that's a, that's a huge factor in the determination as well, so.
How many vehicles does Union County have?
I think, well, I can't get online right now, but off the top of my head, I think they've got fourteen, fourteen, fifteen vehicles.
I understand this is going to take a while to implement, but when it's fully, what's the, will there be a, will NISA's position, whoever's in it at the time, will it still be in existence, just Fayette County?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're not looking to, you know, to remove or diminish a transportation manager's position within an agency. That position's still going to be there. One thing I will say, and I come, which I think this will help give a little bit more clarification on that question, and one of the things I did kind of reiterate on one of the slides is, if you look at the two agencies right now, and actually, I'll use it on a greater scale with some other areas within the state, other nonprofits that we have, we've got some nonprofits out there that have staff members that have, or let me put it to you this way, we've got nonprofits out there that have fiscal directors, they've got an HR director, they've got a training director, they've got a drug and alcohol program manager, they've got all, they've got, they've got a substantial staff to be able to actually hire individuals who manage these parts of the program. If I go over to Fayette County Council on Aging, NISA's the drug and alcohol program manager, she's the fiscal director, she's the training manager, she's, she's all of those things. So, when you're looking at consolidating agencies, that's where you can benefit off of the resources that these other agencies have. Now, instead of giving NISA all of these responsibilities and saying, now, why are you in compliance with the fiscal responsibilities and the fiscal requirements of this program where she has, I'm not saying no experience, but she's got limited experience when it comes to the fiscal technical capacities that are required within this program. Now, Dave on the other hand, he's got some banking background, and he's got some financial experience, but we've got other agencies in the program that they've got a fiscal director, that's, they've got a degree in accounting.
Do they have one in Union County?
What's that?
Do they have one in Union County?
Do they have a fiscal director in Union County? Not currently, no.
Okay, so that's not even open.
Well, it's the agency director, the agency director over there, and again, we can talk offline on this, but the agency director over there, the amount of fiscal experience that she has is, it's, it meets those levels of federal technical capacity that any agency should have. So, I mean, that's why we're looking at that. But again, I mean, it's just a matter of going in and looking at nonprofit organizations and utilizing the skill sets that they've got and marrying those together. I mean, I'm sure right now, if I walked over, if I asked NISA offline this question, and you don't have to give a response now, NISA, I'm certain right now that there's responsibilities that she has to meet requirements of this program that she would be more than willing to have me take away from her and give to somebody else. Not that she's going to lose her job, but it lessens her responsibility, the administrative burden that she's going to have. Here's the thing, as a transit manager of that system over there, NISA's primary responsibility should be able to come in every single day and worry about the day-to-day operations of that system. Are we getting people to where they need to go and doing it efficiently? She shouldn't have to worry about fiscal respons, primary, now, there's some fiscal responsibilities that she has when it comes to like fare collection, you know, things along those lines, but when it comes to managing quarterly reports and being a primary source of information and responsibility for fiscal responsibility, she shouldn't have that as a transit manager. She should be able to come in every day and worry about whether or not we are getting people to where they need to go. There should be other individuals that have that responsibility to be able to take that off of her plate. There's other areas. Procurement, procurement is, we just went through our state management review, procurement is by far above and beyond the category where there's more deficiencies found within nonprofits than any other category. You know why that is? Because you've got individuals within a nonprofit that have no idea, no background, no experience whatsoever in federal procurement when it comes to federal dollars. There's other agencies that do. So, that's why we're going to go into these areas, and we're going to go, okay, within your nonprofits, who has the skill set within your organization to take the procurement responsibility away from NISA who has no federal procurement background?
Does Trish?
Yes, Trish does. So, we can talk, we can, here's the thing, we've already decided that Union County Commissioners is going to be the pass-through entity for these funds. And it's, it goes back.
We have no say.
The state decided, yes. And the reason for that, again, to reiterate, is based on historical compliance and is based on levels of federal technical capacity in management of, technical capacity and fiscal responsibility, technical capacity in project management, fiscal capacity in capital project management, technical capacity in drug and alcohol program management. I can go on and on and on. So, that's what I'm saying, we're looking at historical compliance and levels of federal fiscal or federal technical capacity when it comes to having the ability and the staff with that experience, knowledge and background to be able to meet compliance in all these areas. And that's why we have chosen Union County Council on Aging to act as that entity.
Has this been implemented in other, particularly in smaller population counties?
This is the first, first region that we're coming to.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is our model or pilot for this regionalization. Now, we've got, like I shared, we've got other systems throughout the state that operate as some sort of regional, regional service, but as far as coming in and implementing it, like to start consolidating systems together, this is the first.
Okay, so you mentioned the KIPRC, that, that's implemented, I mean, similar, KIPRC and another one you mentioned, Aeropad and so forth. Those are ones that are similar in the structure?
They're, Curbsy up north, they're set up where Curbsy is a planning commission. They're not county commissioners or anything, they're a planning commission. They apply for and they receive those federal dollars. They pass those federal dollars through to four nonprofits up there. Two of them, two of them are senior centers, the other ones are like human services.
Very similar to what you're moving us towards, correct?
It's very similar, yeah, very similar, yeah.
Okay. One more question, I know, just a second, about a couple minutes here. Dispatch, you mentioned early about like two adjacent counties going to one place, like Reed, obviously.
Right.
We don't have an actual hospital there. And Union County, you know, so we're both, both counties are huge lights in Reed. Are you going to have vehicles going back and forth county to county? I mean, so Fayette County vehicles going to remain for the most part, I mean, servicing Fayette County clients, or is there going to be?
Oh, I mean, that's where we're going to come in, we're going to plan with them, we're going to look at their travel patterns, we're going to look at the structure and the characteristics of their operations. But to answer, to answer, if I'm hearing you right, are you asking, is Fayette County transit drivers still going to provide transit to Reed? Is that what you're asking?
No, no, I'm saying, if, let's say Union County has a lot of cars, they're very busy, first of the month, whatever. Is Fayette County vehicles going to be going to Union County?
Oh, absolutely. And that's part of the regional. Oh, absolutely, and that's part of the regional, regional model. You have, you have services that are, that are now expanded in this region. Instead of staying within your own county, now you're gonna be going, you're gonna potentially expand services into those other counties around you.
Which is a lot.
And that's where gaps in services come in, because right now, I can tell you, I get calls, not only from Fayette, Union County, but I get a lot of calls from passengers who say, "Look," and I'm just gonna use them as an example because we're familiar with them, obviously, but I'll get calls from passengers in Union County that say, "Hey, Union County's completely booked up." "I call Fayette County, you know, can we utilize their transit system?" Absolutely, and you guys have done that, correct? And vice versa, I can remember when I was a transit manager over here for Fayette County, we used to have in place what was called a, a referral system. The, the agency director that was over there 20 years ago, we had a referral system where we actually sent back documentation back and forth. It was basically like a, like a supplemental, like dispatching or scheduling system that we had set up for those passengers that was within my county that I couldn't provide that service. And now I'm sending a referral to Union County for them to be able to come in to Fayette County and provide that service.
Right, but, but this cross from the Old River to Fayette County. Right now, it's done kind of on a, I'm not gonna say emergency, but if somebody's in pinch, it's unusual. But if it's gonna be common, very common to be crossing county lines, you're looking at more wear and tear on the vehicles, and, I don't know, I'm just, NISA knows her clients. I mean, very well. And she can also tell you, and I haven't been a taxi driver, I can tell you exactly how long it takes to get from Reed to, you know, Sound Place, whatever. And you, you know your people, but you also know the towns so well that you know, well, this is gonna take an extra five minutes, and you start dispatching somebody from here to Union County, not only do you have a lot more time on the road for a driver...
Oh, we understand all that, and all that's gonna be taken into account. When we're looking at planning studies, and we're looking at structures and systems and characteristics and travel patterns, and house scheduling and dispatching setup, we're gonna take all that into consideration. It's not, here's the thing, the questions that you're asking, they've been, they've been answered on the road operationally by other states. And it's shown to be, there, and I can send you, if you give me your information, I can send you that TRB study that I referenced earlier, and you can read through it. And the things that you're identifying as like, you know, potential questions or struggles going through any type of consolidation or, or regionalization, all those are valid, and they've identified that, hey, these were the initial concerns, these are the benefits that came out of these, these concerns. I mean, we, we have basically disproven that all of these concerns on the front end, we've answered them, we've shown that, that regionalizing services, consolidating services has, has proved to be beneficial.
When you've got people that would be in Union County, you say, "I can't get a ride, you're close." I mean, and it, it happens here, it would be answered by more vehicles and more staff to drive those vehicles, rather than, I don't know, change, I don't know. I, I, I guess I'd have to see.
Yeah, I mean, there's, we're, like I said, we're not naive to know that there's not gonna be a thousand questions wanting to be, to be asked, so. Is, is anything new, if you're gonna have questions, you're gonna have hesitation? But again, if it wasn't a proven model and proven to work, we wouldn't even be looking at it. But again, the, the, the model of operating within a single county and having 40-plus recipients operating in such a model is long gone. It's a dinosaur. And if we don't, as a state, and actually, I mean, not to get off on a rabbit trail, but there's other areas of our program where we have to sound, start taking a look at, how do we catch up? Because we are lagging behind, when, especially when it comes to technology, and the way that we've seen other states implement technology within the public transit industry, we need to start catching up with that. And so, again, I mean, we understand there's gonna be a thousand questions, but we'll get through it, so...
Well, hopefully, Todd, when we get a chance to see the mutual agreements that are forthcoming, we will get a better feel for what this may look like. And of course, these, these agreements that will be between the Fayette County Commissioners and the Union County Commissioners. We wanna have those reviewed by our county attorney, and I'm sure they will do the same thing.
Oh, yeah.
And if there's any questions in that area, we'll dive into this stuff. When do you expect your agency to be able to provide them?
Oh, I, if it's not by the end of the day today, it'll be probably tomorrow. Sometime throughout the day tomorrow, I can get all that information sent to you guys. And I'm gonna send it to Union County Commissioners as well, so they'll have it to review.
And you're meeting with them next week?
Next, uh, third. Next Friday.
Next Friday. Do you any, you two have any questions for Mr. Jennings?
I have.
I have. Dale, we're, we're quite sure there will be questions come up during this process. But, so don't you go running off.
Hey, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay.
Other than today, I'm walking out that door after the meeting, but unless you guys have questions, you want me to turn around afterward?
Yeah, I think for the moment, we're gonna wait, see everything, and then review it. Any questions that arise from that, we'll present them. There's no more questions from here?
All right.
Thank you, Todd.
I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Are there any patron concerns in the audience today? Okay, all that leaves on our agenda for today then is approval of claim and payroll. We have a motion by Dale, seconded by Tracy, to approve claims and payroll. All in favor signify by saying aye, three ayes. And as I get this, uh, this stuff started here, I wanna, there's one thing I'd like to mention. That is, we have a deadline coming up, September the 15th, for the, um, the Indiana broadband speed test. Uh, we have a, we're gonna release $800 million in the state of Indiana for broadband, rural broadband, and, um, they, for these underserved areas, people really need to take this speed test. And you have to get online to take the speed test, and if you don't have internet service, that's kinda hard to do, you might have to go to the library or somewhere to do that, or you can call them. But, uh, we do have a, a large number of addresses that have been entered here in Fayette County, but the more, the better. So if you know anybody that lives outside the city, in the rural areas, that don't have a good internet access, urge them to take this speed test. And you, they can do that at infb.org/speedtest. I've got some cards here. And we, we need as many Fayette County addresses included on this survey as possible. That only, um, makes our, helps our effort to get more funding. So I wanna bring that up, hopefully, maybe the newspaper might pick it up. But if you're watching this meeting, take the speed test before September the 15th, if you can. That includes you, Wade, and Wade, down in your neighborhood, I don't know, what's your...
Well, I have Frontier right now.
Okay.
It's a, it's, it's one step above Dial-A.
Okay. You certainly need help down there.
Yes, absolutely, the whole area.
Take the speed test, okay? Have all your neighbors do the same thing. All right, I'll, I'll stop there with that, and we'll get signing here. What's your, um, what's your internet service like out there at your... You have none?
Same as.
Take that speed test. How about you, Tracy?
I lucked out, I got in on Verizon's broadband last year. But I've got the swath, so to speak, and none of my neighbors can get it. But I've got the really good fiber optic type internet service where I'm at, so... But lots of my neighbors don't, so I, I think if Wade could share this maybe on a page even, this information, that would help get it out.
Put it on my Facebook.
Maybe we should put it on our, uh, our county Facebook page or website, too.
Let me ask that question to the person.
You could ask Michael to do that for us.
Channel 3.
Channel 3 TV, put that on there for us, 'cause that deadline date's coming up, and that's really important for a lot of people in Fayette County. 'Cause most of those people that need this aren't even able to watch this. It's the county people.
Well, the bad thing is, the electricity's out, most of the people out there are without internet or phones.
Yeah.
No communication, no communication like that.
Now, even with, uh, our phones, you know, they're really good. You know, we have the, I have Verizon, and it's 5G most places, but there's a lot of dead spots all around us where you lose signal, so...
That concludes our business for today, unless we're forgetting something. Are we forgetting anything? Jane, are we forgetting anything?
Okay, so...
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion by Tracy, seconded by Dale, to adjourn, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, thank you all very much.